Like to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for February 21, 2023. Roll call, please. Mr. Jameson?
Hall?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Trelka?
Here.
Layland?
Here. Would everyone please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on our actions? Thank you. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item one is the agenda received as proposed or amended.
So moved. Second?
Been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. The agenda is received. Item two is public comments. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda? Anyone on Zoom? Hearing none, we'll move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements of such claims. Does weakness?
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Our total bill payment today will be $293,002.10. Didn't notice anything significant in there. The payment from the Sheriff's 60-40 Fund is $2,825.77, and everything appears to be in order.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Aye.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item number four, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer.
Morning.
Right now, our gravel roads are in, continue to be in poor condition on our heavily traveled, gravelled roads. They do have quite a few potholes in them in some locations. We do anticipate the paved road system, while the entire road system, to be affected by the storm tomorrow afternoon. The National Weather Service is anticipating a wintry mix by noon tomorrow afternoon. We do anticipate by tomorrow afternoon, the roads will be in probably poor condition. Just do, it sounds like the winds are going to pick up tomorrow afternoon. So you can expect a poor commute on probably Thursday morning, tomorrow afternoon, maybe even Friday morning, just depending on when the winds die down and how much ice and snow we get. So I just want to advise people that winter is obviously not over and to please slow down and give people plenty of following distance, especially our plows. And I can answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Anna Knapp, HR Specialist. I just wanted to provide a quick update about the classification and compensation survey. I just wanted to send a reminder out to employees that PDQs are due to your supervisor, department head, this Friday. Department heads and supervisors will have a week to review those, and we would like those submitted to HR by Friday, March 3, so that we can review and send to our consultants. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent. Oops, I'm sorry. Minutes being approved for February 14, regular meeting, February 14, the Oversight Board meeting, and February 16, the Budget Work Session.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. Minutes are approved. The consent agenda. The following items are acted upon by a single resolution without separate discussion unless there's something that someone would like to remove from the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item seven, contracts and agreements. This is a resolution that the agreement between Blackhawk County and Origin Design Dubuque, Iowa, for professional services, including bridge rehabilitation design on the East Cedar Wapsie Road Bridge over Crane Creek in Blackhawk County, with a quote of $33,000 be approved and the chair be directed to sign as recommended by Katherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Kathy?
Yeah, as the resolution says, this is for rehabilitation work on this structure. We want to remove the concrete deck, which is in poor condition, and do some rehabilitation on the steel beams underneath the concrete deck. So Origin Design is qualified. We need a structural engineer to do this type of design work for us. We are doing the general plans work and the layout work. This money would come out of our FY '24, our professional services budget. Can I answer any other questions?
So what's the nearest crossroad? I'm just trying to visualize.
So this would be up on Cedar Wapsie, near Elk Run Road, and then to the east of Elk Run Road.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item eight, other business. Resolution to approve the Recorder's Office remodel project with an estimated cost of $65,000 to be paid for with American Rescue Plan funds.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. If there anyone wants to speak to this? I was gonna say, Linda or Mike?
I'll comment on the Baker-Tilly evaluation of this project. Baker-Tilly did find that it likely qualifies. They classified it as enumerated capital under $1 million, so clearly enumerated under the rule. That is, for people who count the levels on their burden-approved continuum, that is a level six. We've seen a number of projects come in under that. But yeah, so Baker-Tilly has assigned it an eligible category for expense category under ARPA.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I meant the Treasurer's Office when I looked for them. Their remodel is your office.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I would just add that that $65,000 is an actual quote that I did receive at the time from a local company that came in.
What actually, what actually is the remodel part? I mean...
Tom, it's actually reorganizing the workstation so they're six feet apart. It's kind of similar to what the Assessor's Office, what TJ has done with his cubicles, creating an aisle down the middle, and then the workstations are six feet apart.
And that's what creates it a COVID project?
That's, that's one of the reasons that it is justified under ARPA, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a resolution. If there are no further questions, please answer as your name is called.
Trelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item B, resolution to direct the Finance Director to advertise for a public hearing on the proposed Blackhawk County budget maximum property tax levy hearing for the fiscal year 2023 to 2024, to be held on March 14, 2023, at 9:05 in the boardroom of the courthouse.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments you want to make? We're just ready to go to set it. Okay? Any questions?
This is just, remember, this is the first of two hearings, so this just sets the most that we can tax only for the general and supplemental levy, does not include, and rural, does not include the debt service levy. So it's kind of a preliminary hearing, I would call it.
Great. Thank you. Please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item nine is the work session. Discussion and possible board action, consideration of all aspects of the fiscal year '24 Blackhawk County budget.
First thing you want to bring up, it doesn't want me bringing up. Better eyesight than I have to. Now, oops, I see. Apologize, this is just not... Doesn't want to behave, but we'll get there in a minute. There we go. All right. First things, just some of the things I wanted to review. Yeah, not sharing the screen yet, am I?
No.
All right. I just want to remind us of some of the things that are going on, I guess we'll say. And we'll talk a little bit more about our tax askings in just a moment, but I think you're probably all aware that both the Senate and the House had passed the, what they want to call a Corrections Bill, that reduces our property valuations for fiscal '24. I have recalculated things based on that. I did not have the correct residential rollback, so I have just fixed that. Haven't had a chance to review it, but I will show you a worksheet that's gonna be different than the one in your packets because I didn't have that earlier this morning. It's just a slight difference. But one of the things that has also been happening in the state legislature in the last week is that they have introduced another bill that is really very draconian to local government that would put lots of limitations on how much taxes can go up in a year. I don't, I have not looked at the details, so I'm, I can't speak to the methodology right now, but one of the, one of the concepts that's talked about is taking the taxes from the current year and capping, saying it can only go up a certain percentage in future years. And I just want you to keep that in mind as we're talking about our tax levy, setting it for this year. That may very well have an impact on future years should that bill become law for next year. So I just felt like I need to say that out loud to all of us. Let's see. I think with that, I'm just gonna go through some of the items on the list that you have should be on the front of your packet. We've talked about the board allocations. You historically have allocated some funds for those kinds of things. Last year, you budgeted $100,000. At this point, you've committed of that $100,000, $81,500. So wanted to mention that. There, we, there were a couple of different numbers floating around, so I had to dig around, do some research. You did decide to grant Grove Cedar Valley $25,000 and then Cattle Congress $1,500, which was in addition to the initial $55,000 that was approved. So that's how we get to the $81,500.
Good. Appreciate the clarification.
Yes, because that was confusing. I was, I was also confused. So it was nice to go back and dig through minutes, and I believe that's, that's the total now. At this point, I do have $100,000 budgeted again in this year's budget, should you choose to do that. And we can discuss that at any time. I wasn't going to show the slides about the new positions again, but I think we've all discussed those. It's 5.1 FTEs, some of which are funded with fees for services, so nothing has changed there. Again, non-bargaining pay raises, budget at 3%. Then we have the Compensation Board recommendation for the elected officials at 3%, for the supervisors, 10%, for other elected officials. We have a few internal, and I'm gonna call them internal, external pay adjustments that Human Resources is recommending, plus we have a pool to potentially address issues that may arise when the compensation study is completed. And then we have the rural library allocation, and I have a little more history on that. I'll show towards the end of this today. But we allocated $173,000 in fiscal '23, and I have, at this point, preliminarily budgeted $187,000 for '24. That's a 10% increase. And then, of course, we have capital increases. So the first thing, well, I shouldn't say the first, the next thing we'll review is our total property tax askings. And I have updated this to reflect the revised property valuations because that bill that was just passed actually reduces our property valuations substantially. That decreases the amount we can put in our general basic levy total. So at the bottom of page one, if you would compare that to the version you had last week, that number has declined. The expenses have changed slightly. I've just had to move more employee benefits from the supplemental fund in order to fund everything that we've been talking about funding so far. And I did make one other change, and that is in the Sheriff's Office. I did increase expenses slightly there. I'm still working on the 60-40 Fund, and I needed to get that to balance out because I was having it contribute to property taxes, which is not our intent. So there's a small correction there, too. I think that's the only changes made to this page. Then we've got the general supplemental levy. And again, the change there is increasing the transfer to the general basic levy, just to cover our employee benefits due to the lower property values. So that now is becoming a higher increase at 8.3%. Rural basic levy, I did look at the local option tax, and I did increase that revenue source by $100,000 for the rural basic levy. That brings that tax increase, if you remember, it was 13% last week, that brings it down to 10 and 1/2. So based on this version, if we made no changes, what I would publish for that maximum levy hearing that we'll have on March 13 would be the total tax askings of $35,775,519. Total increases of just over a million and a 2.9% increase in total collections. However, it, because, so since total taxes are going up more than 2%, that will take a supermajority to pass that levy. And particularly with rural being at 10 and 1/2, that's part of that issue. So that is where that stands today. Now, I'm gonna try to bring up...
And Michelle, is that two separate votes would take a majority, supermajority? Or is it just one because they're both included?
You know, that's a good question. I'll have to research that because generally I see it as one vote, but it might be appropriate to do it as two, so I will look into that. Unless, okay. I won't put Tim on the spot. Don't ask me this question.
I don't know that we've ever done it before. It's kind of a first time.
Yeah. All right. Now I have to go get the sheet I just calculated, so give me just a minute here. Oh, no, that one popped up easily. Okay.
And you have, for all the things you mentioned in that first slide that you were gonna review, there are other slides following?
There's others, yes. We're gonna talk about things more. Yeah. Don't jump ahead yet. I, I thought it made sense probably to start out to refresh ourselves with the overall picture before we start diving into the individual things this morning, so...
Works for me.
That's what I was trying to do there.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yep. Nope, that was a good question, and I'm gonna try to get rid of that. And I have this lovely little R in my way. Okay. Why is it larger on my screen than that one? I don't know.
It says 74.5. I wonder if you go up to...
I meant 150 on my screen. That's what, I don't know why you're not seeing.
I don't either, yeah.
Oh, you're not seeing this? Okay, I see. I need to switch. This is what I thought was happening. I gotta go find a new window. Maybe. All right, we're gonna hesitate for a minute. I'm sorry, this, because I just did this, I didn't get it where I wanted it. I am just cursed with this, aren't I? All right, Al, you're gonna have to come rescue me again. I don't know why I struggle with this. Okay, wanna select a different window?
I'll look up and zoom again.
No, that's my problem. All right. Sorry.
You can share your screens instead of just sharing them. You can just flip through.
I know, this one's just in a different place because I just did it. Sorry. Where is it? Okay. Okay, that helps now. I just have to find it now.
Are you gonna be flipping back through multiple screens or just...
All the rest of them are in the same.
Oh, video thing.
Yes, this one I couldn't because I did it just right when this meeting was started. Let me make sure it's the right one. It's not. That's the problem. It's not the one I want you to see.
Okay.
You know what? Maybe we're just not gonna get to that one this morning because maybe I didn't get it. I'm just, I gotta look for it. We're just gonna use this one and go with it. These taxes are slightly... Yeah, sorry. These taxes are... Okay, but this is gonna drive me nuts. That's what happens when you try to change things. Hopefully the rest of them, I have to flip back to the others, but we'll get there. So this, this shows, you can match up these numbers. I'm gonna see where my cursor is, maybe I'll highlight that. That's where I've changed the general basic tax askings to be lower because our property values for taxable went down, $66 million. And if you had compared the next line, the general supplemental, to last week's, that went up, so we're roughly at the same place. Tax, total tax increase is still 851,072, including debt service. And unfortunately, our tax rate, if you want to look at that now, it's $9.62 for everything. The urban or countywide rate is $5.079, and rural basic is at $3.83. And I apologize, fixed this during the first meeting, but I can't get it to come up. So residential property maybe has an increase of $7.51 per 100,000 of assessed value, and again, that'll be slightly different. Same with rural, although because they're a different levy, theirs is going up $23.35 per thousand. Industrial at $13.74 per 100,000, and that would be same for commercial. Agricultural property, again, we're in the rural levy, and they have a higher rollback at 91.64%, so they would see a $65.50 increase per 100,000 of taxable value. And multi-res residential, which I am glad this is the last year, I'll be talking to you about this, but they go down 13%, so they save $46.68 per 100,000 of taxable value. So that's a draft, and I apologize, I don't have the rollback right, but we'll get that to you for next time. So the next thing we want to talk about, I think we will go to the compensation.
No, you're saying the rollback number isn't correct. You'll get that to...
Right.
But the amount is correct, or that will change it?
Not the taxes either. So the residential taxes are just wrong, and I'm sorry. I, I didn't have the right number yesterday, and Tim told me about 950.
We just got it at 7:30 this morning, so...
Yeah, I know. Thank you, Steve.
I just didn't get, so I estimated 54%, and it came in at like 54.6, I think. So that's, we're, we're in the range, we're just not right on. Okay, so, you gotta be kidding me. Sharing the right thing again. Okay, here we go again. Haha, okay. I think this'll go smoother now. All right, these, I just tried to make a schedule that was a little cleaner, so you can see the equity pay adjustments for, these are the positions that are being recommended to be brought basically up to market because they were far low. And if, if you look at the second column to the right, and I, that's not true of the payroll section, I didn't have that data to put on here. Those were changing their pay grades to more accurately reflect what they do, so that's the source of those increases and the reason for it. But you can see that we have other department heads that were ranging in pretty low percentages compared to market. So Human Resources is requesting or suggesting that those be brought up, and two of them probably look a little higher than you might expect, but that's based on their years of service with the county, at 12 and 14 years of service. If you don't, if you have any questions or any further discussion?
Anybody? No? Doesn't sound like it.
All right, then we'll go to the elected officials.
Michelle, just back up one second. So that dollar amount there that we just saw, that's already in the tax askings?
If you remember, I had put, one, I added one row for two things. I put additional pay and I put the turnover reflection, the savings from turnover. I netted those two items because I, I didn't really have this by department, so I couldn't spread it by department. So yes, these are reflected in the tax rate that we have now. That was a good question. Thank you for reminding me to mention that.
Are all these that we're gonna be talking about are currently in the tax askings?
Yes. Yep. All the...
And that numbers, that number's what? Now remind me, the tax increase we're currently setting at?
The total is, I believe, 2.3% if, if we include debt service. You'll see 2.9% in the maximum tax levy hearing because you don't include debt service, and our debt service is declining. So yeah, we're at 2.9, well, 2.2 overall. Let's stick with the overall. So these few adjustments are $56,000 in pay, and with property taxes, you get up to about 71 and 1/2. That's, I think a penny raise is somewhere around, oh, $58,000, so that's probably what we're looking at here. Is that everything, Tom?
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Okay. All right, now we'll go back to elected officials. Tried to, excuse me, give you a couple of alternatives, and the R just doesn't want to go away. Thinks I need help, but I need it with Zoom. So are there any on here you wanted to...
No, just review a little bit, I guess, if you don't mind. I was gonna say, what does...
Happy to. So as you are all very familiar, we have a separate compensation board that meets to make recommendations on pay raises for this group of employees. And the Board of Supervisors is allowed to reduce those recommendations pro rata, but can't increase them. You can, you can't accept the Board's recommendation, which was 3% for the supervisors and 10% for all other elected officials. So I gave you just two examples. It changes, I think it's about $20,000 per 1% of pay change. So if you adopted all of these, for all these employees, the wages would be an increase of $171,000, and with IFRS and FICA, roughly just under $200,000. If you chose, then you can... If you chose, then you can, say you chose to just do 25% of the recommendation, then your total increase is only 50,000 for these. And again, these are, also are all in the tax levy that you have seen at the 10%. If you chose to do 50%, you're sitting at about 100,000 in cost for everything.
The 10, the recommendations, is what, the 10% for all the electeds and the 3% for supervisors is what you're saying?
That would be 200,000 is built in, yes, I'm sorry, that is what's built in.
The full recommendation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate seeing the additional positions that sometimes we don't, like say, we just.
It's easy to forget about those, but when you, it isn't just the supervisors and your department heads. You also have some deputies and other positions that are affected by that, so we thought it would be helpful to see all of them.
Michelle, don't we only have one department left with deputies, the recorder?
We also have in the attorney's office, one in the attorney's office, two in the recorder, and then there are three police sheriff's captains, sorry, and four lieutenants in the sheriff's department, office, yeah.
Is it the one in the attorney's office is considered as code language, Iowa code? So it's not necessarily a deputy, it's got different language that's tied to the county attorney's salary, is that correct?
I believe that's correct. I'm seeing Attorney Williams and Mike Trainon are nodding, so we're saying yes.
So it's called something else?
It, it may be called something else.
I don't believe it's called something else, but I believe it's, the salaries tied to the salary of the county attorney.
Same as the others, gotcha, thank you.
Brian, is that your recollection as well?
We call something different, but, yeah.
And that's probably why Amanda put First Deputy on here, so that he would realize why we're putting it here.
So there's like 10 additional positions affected by that?
Yes, yep, 10 plus 5 elected officials plus 5 supervisors, so yeah, 20 people, it's quite a few.
Yeah. Thanks, any questions?
You ready to move on? The next thing we're gonna talk about, I think, we had talked about, and when we were going through the board activities, I had some questions and about all the things that are covered in there. So I've given you a lot of detail, maybe more than you want right now. I tried to do some schedules from our system to kind of show you those and put explanations of what they are. And I don't, I don't know if you, I can go through each one, I think maybe I'll just mention the names. Cedar Bend Humane Society, which we use for our stray animals, dues to Intercog.
And the reimbursement, let me, before you go too far, the DHS one, that's from rent?
Yeah, it's actually, comes from our cost allocation report, so it includes indirect costs. It definitely, rent is a good way to look at it.
Or I'm just thinking from the pine crest, okay.
Yep, it is for pine crest, you're correct.
Humane Society, yep, that comes up again.
And the portion that's here probably is also more for services too, for, it's got lots of things added into it. You will, Eastern Iowa Tourism Association, I did have, let's see, Department of Correctional Services is budgeted out of here. We also have, and I believe I've provided this to you already, but Met Transit requests assistance for elderly transit. And so I have budgeted the amount they requested in here. That's everything under the general levy under Department 101. And we have General Fund, Department 102.
Cedar Bend is just a regular contract we have yearly or every three years, isn't that correct?
Correct, yep, and that, that contract does need to be renewed. Should you choose to, for fiscal '24, it does expire June 30th of 2023.
That's, that's under general basic?
Yes.
Well, what about the other contracts? Where do they fall out under, like, community services? Where does that fall under?
Oh, do you mean the board allocations, maybe?
No, community services that we give to Operation Threshold, Jesse Cosby and EMA.
They are under a different category. Did I go by them? Cause it did seem like they should be there under the agencies. Wonder if I.
Allocation's at 993 on page, like, the second page where it has the, it has the 81,500 anyway, which is the amount that you're speaking about.
That's it, that is. Yeah, that's it. I'm sorry, I went by too fast. I apologize, Tom, it's right at the top of the, of the second page of that and I went by too quickly. So that's where the 100,000 we budget is.
I noticed some of these on your, were, they weren't annually, they were kind of a, on a request. And I think the Fair and 4H was a one-year request, if I'm not mistaken.
I think that's true.
Definitely one, I think too.
Yeah, I left, anything that had an expense in fiscal 2021, 2021 or later, I left on this worksheet. There were, there's a lot of others that I actually removed from this that may have received funding sometime in the past, but, which, it just, yeah. It's, this is a lot of pages long, so I deleted all those just so we could.
I think, Tom, that for, there was a second 4H request and I think that was about the time that we got the Rob Sand inter off, that memo that told us that we needed to be contracting for services and not donations. So I think that maybe stopped that one, one year, so.
Yeah, it just looks like some of these are a hit and miss every other year, like Eastern Iowa Tour.
Yeah, any comments about that one, Eastern Iowa Tourism? I wondered about that also.
I don't recall that.
We have not paid it yet in 2023, but we have been participating. Actually Supervisor Hall probably knows more about it than Michelle does, but if you wanna talk about it.
Uh, sure, yeah. I don't know how long the county's been a, a member. Certainly as long as I've been involved in the tourism arena, so for five years. The county has been, every county across the state is a, is a member. It's not particularly high dues, but.
Was it an ad or something like that?
Uh, member benefits, uh, and so, so there was a regional visitor guide that you got, got an add-in. You got access to membership listings, that sort of thing.
I do recall something, but yeah, thank you, thanks.
And Michelle, do you know where the watershed management authorities are falling under?
No, as a matter of fact.
Cause I wanna make sure there's.
I am so glad you mentioned that Thursday because I spent some time looking yesterday. I cannot find that we have paid that yet, nor where we budgeted it from. So if we want to participate in that, we're, we've gotta figure that out.
And I did follow up with an email to Jennifer on the line, just to make sure, I guess we were current and if they were gonna be requesting additional.
Yeah, and I had, too, and we, we definitely are requesting and counting on what we budgeted last year.
Understandable.
Chris, wasn't last year the first year that we?
Yeah, last year was the, the first year and we did the, the Middle Cedar River Watershed Management and we did the WOBSY, one that Dan sits on. And then we're also a member of the Upper Cedar River Water Management Authority.
But they hadn't requested anything at least to date yet or something.
Right, and I, uh, messaged them to see if they had any funding loads and, and they didn't get a response, which was, okay.
That's what I'm always surprised to, no response.
One of those loose ends, maybe we can tie up for Thursday.
Yeah, because you said you didn't see that it was actually paid out for.
No, and sometimes places like that will want you to make your checks payable to a different vendor. I tried to think of logical ones, but I could not find it. I tried searching the amount. Linda did have an invoice for the middle and I, I can't find anything by that amount either. And I was gonna ask the auditors, obviously, to help me look, cause sometimes they're better at searching than I am.
That's fine, I thought the email would probably prompt a, no, you haven't paid, or yes, you have, or something, so we'd at least get caught up on that, but yeah.
Michelle, just a, just a, this is minor, just a heads up, Eastern Iowa Tourism has merged into a different organization at this point. So it'll look different, Iowa Travel Industry Partners will be the.
I appreciate you telling me that because I would have not known that.
And then the Department of Correction Services always comes up every year too, so that's just a, it's not one.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, we're required, I believe, to fund that, so we are.
I think they bill us or something or whatever.
Yes, yep.
Gotcha.
Yes, we've had quite an interesting experience. I probably have too many auditor genes, so I, I didn't wanna approve those myself. I, I wanted someone that was actually responsible and aware that they were providing services to do that. But I believe we have that system back in place now, apparently, probably due to COVID, it kind of fell off the last couple of years. But we are trying to be very careful for our taxpayers that we're only paying things we should be. Let's see, then. So we'll go down to, now I see what happens, why it jumps ahead on me.
Cost Advisory Services?
Yes, that, that is the company that we pay to do our indirect cost allocation plan. Direct related to that $65,000 in revenue that we saw on the first page. And there is actually another chunk of revenue that is in another budget from that too, from DHS. So that, we probably, it's, it's a very worthwhile thing to have that done. So I think we wanna keep budgeting for that. The next thing we have is Black Hawk County's share of the Criminal Justice Information System. And that total is the 158,299 dollars you see there, plus another 12,000 for furniture and equipment.
Michelle, I asked you a question the other day and I, I didn't think I saw the answer. There's a carryover in that fund, how come that doesn't come back to the reserves?
I think that's a policy that could be changed. There is carryover there and, you know, maybe Sheriff Thompson is here, do you, you wanna speak to that?
The carryover allows for larger projects like paying for servers and rack systems and things like that to be budgeted for over two or three budget years. So there's a purpose built into the carryover. Right now, I don't know that we have a larger project, but we're also currently working with County IT on a larger plan, as we've discussed in years past. CGIS is our only IT budget line item, so all of our infrastructure for computers are through the IT, or through the CGIS budget. And so all of our servers, all of those kinds of things are aging right now. So any carryover that's reflected in that fund are reserved for any of those kind of expenses moving forward.
What is the total? I don't remember, I had the sheet yesterday. What's the total of CGIS budget?
I was thinking, was it that carryover, was it like 200,000 or 169 or?
I apologize, I didn't think to grab that one for this morning.
This, this is tax asking money?
It absolutely is, tax askings. I was, I might be wrong, but I was thinking Black Hawk County's share of the carryover was 47,000, maybe. My memory's not good, so I could be mistaken about that, but.
Do we carry the, the full amount from the other cities too, on carryover?
No, each, so each participating entity has their own allocation of that carryover. And I, I don't believe the county maintains that, yeah. County does not maintain that checking account, so we, we don't even have that in a custodial fund. Those are good questions, sorry, I didn't think to grab that sheet today. Anything else on this printout?
Just you commented on Matt.
Yes, yeah, cause I wasted by the others too fast, accidentally, but I think we've got them all now.
Michelle, are we supposed to be making decisions or is this just a, just a quick run-through?
That is up to the board. I think we, I think we had this work session, yeah. The work session is set for possible board actions, so if you, should you want to, you may.
So, yes, so are you kind of reviewing with us, like an overall, and then we can make decisions or do you?
If you want to, that, yeah, that'd be fine. If it's easier to talk about it while we're here, that's fine too.
Whatever, what would, yep, what would your pleasure be, Tom? We can do it either way, it sounds like, but I was gonna say, when you get.
Well, we could go through the review that Michelle's doing, but I, I just wanted to make sure that we were gonna address some of those yet with wages and so forth. Michelle, to drop the tax asking where it's currently at, down 1%, what's that equate to a dollar amount that we'd have to cut?
You read my mind.
Probably 300,000, roughly, off the top of my head.
Yeah, I think you're pretty close.
Every time we do 300,000, we reduce 1%, I believe.
Yeah.
Approximately, yeah.
So, and we're at 2.3.
Yes.
What does that do for egg?
It depends on which levies you reduce. And we, maybe this isn't the right time to bring it up, but rural has a big jump this year, partly because of the change in the way we're allocating the dispatch costs that doubled for us, I think.
Yeah, I wonder if we should look at that, at least look at options, if that's something we wanna do to kind of ease that a little bit for this year, but that's just a thought.
Yep, yep.
Any other thoughts? I mean, or anybody, at least look at it, or it doesn't have to be just for me, but I just meant, I thought.
Be nice to look at it.
Take a look at the number and then see if, what that means.
Okay, yep, if there's.
Cause ours over doubled. I know there were some in the room that were concerned of theirs being so high, but ours was among the highest.
You looked at percentage increase. The little town of Dunkerton had the highest percentage increase in dispatch and Black Hawk County was next.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, hard dollars is different, but you know, their populations are different too, so.
Yeah, I'd just like to look at, just because it is kind of a surprise, it was kind of a surprise to everybody.
It was to all of us, yes, I agree.
Thanks.
All right, well, so do you want, do you want me to keep going to the next one, Tom, or did you wanna talk about?
Sure, sure, that's fine.
Okay. So we just talked about what we call our board agencies. These are our board general supervision activities. And I, we had just switched to that, but, so we bill and we're reimbursed for a lot of, it's primarily phone usage by several entities, First Judicial Districts. I've got some strange, court-appointed advocate, NAF Care District Courts. These were ones that was fun to run down how all this works, JCS, Student Court Services. For, this is quite a learning curve for me, I was just gonna tell you that, starting out, but I'm, I think we've got it in pretty good shape now.
And you have, just comment on the utility reimbursements, does phone billing and, I mean, parentheses, NAF Care, question mark?
Yeah, we had, well, because I was surprised to see them in there, but there were a couple, that's where the deposit was from. So, yeah, should've taken that question mark off, cause I did go verify that, but.
Okay.
They must, yeah, we probably charge back long distance or something for them. Then we get to our board's general supervision activity. And I, we, we do have some, some expenses that have been made with, they'll say ARPA on the side here, they were using replacement revenue. So you will see some expenses in here in '22 and possibly '23 that are kind of one-time, one-time things right now. But I think things I wanted to highlight, I tried, oops, I tried to list out all the dues and memberships that I'm aware of that we're paying. ISAC, Intercog, Metrofunders, National Association of Accounties. ISAC, we seem to get billed two different things for that. And professional fees, I ran on a separate schedule, so we'll look at that in a moment. We, otherwise, we pretty much went through this budget with a fine-tooth comb the other day, I just couldn't remember all the. I just couldn't remember all the dues and all the professional fees. Yeah. So then other policy administration, that is where we pay for our audit fees and our Government Finance Officers Association dues and the filing fees and the filing fee with the state, those kind of miscellaneous things. Pay for the countywide postage, and we don't pay for all postage. Some departments pay a portion of it, but anything that is not paid by the departments is running through here. And then here's the phone charges that go with the reimbursements we looked at earlier. So it's probably a lot more detail than you're used to seeing, but.
It's a lot of detail.
There were too many things for me to remember. Yeah, it was just easier for me to give you the schedule.
There are categories in there, yeah.
Then here's the detail, oops, perhaps not. This is the detail, the professional fees I wanted to share. Urban County Coalition, fees for negotiations, and just other general consulting with our labor attorneys.
Gallagher Benefit?
Gallagher Benefit, that we are required for our audit, we have to record a liability for post-retirement health insurance obligations, basically. And that's pretty technical, so we do hire Gallagher to calculate that. And it's and every other year, you'll see them at the top where it says OPEB roll forward. So for 2022 is 3,500, and now it I put in 10,500. And Berens Tate is if we use to calculate our arbitrage rebate in case there's any fees owed to the IRS on our bond, bond issues. So comes up, we're budgeting, we have a total of 76,000 budgeted in there for those things. So we've got, I thought I had one more. Oh, here we go. And then we have the real basic board levy. And this one, we've already talked about the fact that we do our planning and zoning from here. So the 115,000 out is for the city of Waterloo, since we contract with them to provide those services. The county's share of emergency, the Emergency Management Association dues we account for here, 16,500, because obviously our share is more for the rural populations, the city of Waterloo should be, you know, and Cedar Falls, all the cities are paying for the urban areas. And this is where we have also the libraries contract, which they had requested a 10% increase this year, up to 187,000. I do have another schedule I'll show you in a moment, showing historically over the last five years what we have done for the libraries. Then we have $2,000 we typically budget for the Soil and Conservation District to support their office operations. And a couple of small fire dues, Quad County Firefighter School. And I'm still trying to track down the Black Hawk County firefighters. We were giving them $250. It seemed to be going directly to equipment. And they we actually voided the checks for a couple of years, so I'm not sure whether that's still an active organization or not, but we'll we'll figure.
Actually, I asked Frank Magzamin, former supervisor, who was Waterloo Fire Chief for a time, said the county was paying that for the last 30 years. And to be honest with you, I can't remember what he said, but it was such a small price. It was what you said, 250 dollars.
As long as they're still active, you know, and cash the checks and use the funds.
If we voided the checks, it's kind of unusual.
Yeah, so. Hopefully, we'll hear back.
I think you had his name. Yeah, I was gonna say you were talking about him.
Yep, I did.
And the Quad County or the Quad County Fighter Fighter School, is that something we've done all the time, too? I don't remember.
I think for some quite sometime. I guess I don't know for sure how long, but.
Do you remember anything on that, Tom?
You know, a lot of these, Linda, if you recall, they've never really come up over the years. They were just assumed that it was a yearly thing, and we really never even talked about them. There's some on here that I kind of forgot that we were even still contributing to. So Michelle's pretty efficient this year.
Digging up this stuff.
I know I spent a lot of time learning it, so I decided we could all share, yeah.
But you'll find out probably then going forward, I guess, on those two.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we'll hear from them, yeah, and then we'll know.
All right, thank you.
And the last.
We've had Met Transit come in every so often. The amount's very small, and it costs to help, it doesn't cover the cost of the rideshare in the rural area. It just helps them a little bit, so that one's always been explained that way.
Do they bill for those, then, I assume? They bill for those, Tom, do you remember? Or do they just?
We have requests.
They only get what we allocate, which again is a small amount, but they said it costs more than that. Otherwise, they'd have to charge it to the county people, you know, for doctor's appointment.
Oh, yeah.
Elderly and so forth.
Okay, I'm sure we'd be able to get reporting on them. I'm sure they would share that.
I'm sure.
We have in the request letter, can't picture what, it's got some details in it. So it might have maybe the 22 rights. I'm not sure, but I will, I'll send that out to you again.
Thanks.
Michelle, the major areas where we invested a million dollars in solar, have you seen a reduction in their requests on utilities?
Yes, the electric, when you look at the bills, it's a dramatic drop to the $10. There unfortunately, there's other utilities that are increasing, so when you just look at the account balance, you don't necessarily see it. But the good news is the account balance, you know, the amount we need for that is not rising because the savings in solar is offsetting increased gas prices, basically, for natural gas.
And because of the DHS cost year, I believe that price came down closer to 700,000. Rory's shaking his head, yes.
It's even lower than that.
For the Pinecrest facility, it was actually roughly 750 to start with, and then that was before the DHS involvement of 400,000. Over amortized period of, I believe, 20 years. Yeah.
So, yeah, that actually, that program is working well for us right now. Then the last thing I had on this list was Northeast Iowa Response Group, which is, they serve, I think, 17 counties, and they do hazardous waste accidents cleanup, so that's what their purpose is there. Most of that is reimbursed to the county. Actually, there's a revenue, offsetting revenue because the cities reimburse us for their shares of that. And I think that's all I have for all those board things. Let's go back to the library for a minute. So I have the amounts that we have funded them at for the last five years, just so you could see the trend of what we've been doing. And I think that's that's probably all the actual materials I have to share today, so I think it can be open for discussion. Try not to all talk at once.
So we're going to publish the max levy, and that is everything. So we've got, you see, from now until we pass the final levy to to make some decisions on some of these areas.
Yep. And I would assume, not that I want to, but full disclosure, I would assume as part of the bills she signed yesterday, we probably do have until the end of April, but I don't, I don't think it will take us that long to wrap this up.
Nope, unless they throw something else.
Let's hope not. That's I'm always happy when they adjourn.
Well, just looking at the libraries, and I see, I know our history is kind of varied in that 3 to 6 something percent. I, as much as I'd love to just give them the 10, I'm not sure this is the year to do that. I don't know if, is there support for like a 6 or 7% increase or not, just to get the discussion rolling?
I support, I mean, I support the whole 10 because I don't think it really moves the needle that much. And I'm just thinking, they didn't really present it this year, but in years past have presented us a comparison to some of our more comparable counties, and we're still significantly lower in library contributions.
I kind of wish that, I've always said, when we contribute money like this, we have no idea where it's going. Is it going for wages? And I know a lot of times over the years, the question the board's always had is the allocation of wage increases in the library are higher than what the county gives. And their question was, is that the money they're getting from us? I could support moving it to 6% this year.
I could, too. It's not much, but I think it's with these little bites, we're gonna find several hundred thousand dollars.
I mean, I'm comfortable with the 10%. Now, if we're at 7%, it saves us $5,000. So I hear that 5,000 is 5,000. I get the little bites argument, but I'm comfortable. I'm comfortable at 10 as well.
Just to call for the question, I'll make a motion and recommend a 6% increase.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded for a 6% increase for the libraries. I guess we'll do roll call vote. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
No, only because I support 10%, not because I don't support funding.
Yeah.
Chalka?
Yes.
Hall?
No, for the same reason, also a 10%.
Leyland?
Yes.
So the motion carries for a 6% increase for the libraries. I don't know where you're making those notations, I assume, for the next discussions for that we need to have going forward.
So I would, I believe that amount, then, it would be 180,200, 180?
180, 200, or 182? Okay, 180.
I'll offer a motion to solidify the non-bargaining pay raises at 3%.
Second.
Yes, is there a second for that? 3%? There's, it's been moved and seconded for the non-bargaining raise increase to be 3%.
Our bargaining this year is 3%, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
So it's been moved and seconded. I guess please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
I would offer a motion to modify the recommendation of the Compensation Board to 3% for supervisors and 7% for the other elected officials.
Actually, you would, if you were going to do 7% for the others, you would have to bring the supervisors down.
Down by 30%.
Whatever you reduce.
Everything has to be proportional.
And then I will drop that motion. I'll just offer a motion to accept the recommendation of the Compensation Board.
The 10 and 3s.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, so please answer as your name is called. We accept the 100% of the recommendation of the comp board.
Chalka?
No.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
No.
All right, that motion fails. Do we want to consider a second motion or have some discussion?
I'll never support a raise for myself.
Yeah. I'm having.
Dan, I didn't catch it. What was it?
I will never support a pay increase for my position.
Okay. You know, the only problem I have with the increases right now is even with the staff readjustments or classifications, simply it, I'm not saying they're justifiable. The only thing I'm, it's hard for me to to support a raise when we still have a tax increase. If our taxes were down and we didn't have any kind of an increase, then I think, yeah, I think our employees deserve it. But when we make action like this, it's just hard for me to make, you know, to support any of that because, you know, it's it's tough times yet out there, and I think we all know that. I'm not telling anybody any differ. And just to clarify what I said last week, I talked to a couple supervisors afterwards. I didn't mean that we could balance the budget with our reserves. That's usually a no-no. The only thing I meant was that we have two options, reduce tax asking or use reserves. And I think it's pretty easy to move some numbers around and get that tax axing and just drop it down. And I think with a couple of cuts here, we can do that today.
Well, and for this particular one, I know, like I said, it's difficult because you do know people work hard and deserve reward for their work. I thought the timing of this was a little different because we have this comp study underway now, and we started that, and we haven't even identified really where we're at with our staff as far as adjustments and that type of thing. And all of a sudden, I think these seemed a little high without much discussion. And I don't mean the supervisors, but even the 10% for everyone across the board. I know a thought went through my mind, and I know there's about seven proposed changes from the state, talking about changing the Compensation Board. So who knows where this could end up, but I did think it might be helpful in the future. I know Michelle and Amanda both sat in on the meeting and tried to provide additional guidance and talk about, you know, salary survey information and provided some of that as well. But I just thought maybe they should, we should ask the Compensation Board, if they're still intact next year, to come to the board and make their recommendations or let us know how they arrived at their recommendations and not just kind of. It just didn't appear that there was a lot of thought that went into, I thought, not to be critical of them. I know it's very difficult to judge positions, but that and the comp study just made me think that that we were kind of putting the cart before the horse and putting positions at a different increase than we were even considering for our staff, so.
I don't recall, Linda, the board ever actually accepting the total compensation recommendation any year. Their job's tough, but they sit there for 15, 20 minutes. They don't know what the budget is. They don't know how our how our situation is in the economy and so forth. And, you know, sure, they're going to vote because they're representing a certain elected official. They're going to vote an increase, so it's tough for them, but I agree. I think they're gonna, it sounds like they may pass that where they're just going to put it back to the supervisors from here on out.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that point, too. I was in a meeting last week over at Intercog and there happened with other supervisors. And two of them, if not three, mentioned they're in their particular counties that actually talked and met with the Compensation Board, I think. And so I thought that was rather unique, but it was also a good, you know, way to have some dialogue before these recommendations are made and just kind of looking at overall budget and where you want to be and where increases have been. So I just thought it could be beneficial, maybe even to do something like that going forward, that you'd have more input or discussion. So we'd understand, you know, where their decisions are coming from, too, in all fairness to them, so.
I'll make a motion for a zero increase.
I'll second it.
Does do we have, are we allowed to do that? I'm just clarifying, as if it's.
Zero for everybody.
Zero for everybody, okay.
So to review the rule, everybody can come down by an equal percentage, but the board can vote that the board of supervisors comes down by a greater percentage. Those are those are the allowances under the rules for the Compensation Board recommendations.
So we could reduce others, but even not the supervisors at all, not on supervisors at all, too, correct?
You could, if you reduce others, you must reduce the supervisors by at least as much as you reduce others. But you could, I think what you're asking is if we reduced others, could we say supervisors get no increase?
Yeah, and I think that's correct, yeah. Okay, just wanted to clarify, but not that that was mine.
And I'm wondering if we need to look at other implications from the back of the blue law that come into this.
I had I had reviewed that back in December concerning the the 10% increase. I don't, I'd have to go back and take a look at that information. I don't have it in front of me right now to see what a 0% increase would do. But having said that, back the blue only impacts the Compensation Board. It doesn't impact what the board of supervisors does. So you're still allowed to reduce without. So, you're still allowed to reduce without violating back the blue.
So, the motion still stands. It's been moved and seconded for a zero increase for, from... Go ahead, Tim. You were gonna clarify something.
Was that zero for all of the recommendations or...?
Zero for...
Zero, 0% for the recommendations.
Supervisors, sheriff, county attorney, everybody?
All elected officials. So, yeah, the motion is seconded, so you're good. Oh, okay. Please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
No.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
No.
Trelka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
In regard to number five on the list, I support these adjustments recommended by HR from payroll specialist, payroll accounting manager, facilities director, county engineer, human resources director, and conservation director.
That's a motion. I'll second it. I'm sorry. I was gonna say I second it.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Okay. So, that's $71,426,07. I don't know if that needs to be part of the motion, just the support of it.
Yes.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Hey, one second.
Oh.
Do you have that sheet that you can provide me later?
Yes.
Oh. She does. I don't have mine. You need it.
Little?
Again, I support the intent, but not with a tax increase. I'm gonna vote no.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Are we, where we need to get into capital?
I was just gonna bring up the under, under-board allocations. I know we had all received an email from Bart Prather a couple weeks ago. And Linda and I had a follow-up meeting with her on Thursday, and the discussion was about moving the food bank back to where it was funded the same as, like, operation threshold and such. Not that they would come and do the request from that $100,000 pool, but that we would move that into a contracted community agency every year. And I believe that it had been funded previously that way.
Yeah, years ago. I don't remember that. Yeah, they talked about that. I went Tim Staley or something. Before my time, but, yeah, there was discussion on that. What were you wanting to...
Yeah, I was going to, see, 'cause if we did do that, then we could reduce, you know, that $100,000 budget, budgeted amount, by the same amount of what we're planning on allocating. I'm also okay with, you know, even, but that's, that's one way we can make that transition. And the idea is just that, as we do with our assistance on renting utilities, that food insecurity is one of those at base level activities that we should be just committed to every year.
So, would that go through community services like the others?
Yes.
So, it's part of that three package that they bring to us that we have to approve a contract?
Correct.
The dollar amount would stay the same or different?
What was your question, Tom? The other amount would stay the same?
Well, what would the dollar amount be then? I mean, currently, that contract's, I believe, around $81,000. The only thing is, those agencies don't get that money. They send a request to community services, and we pay it out of there.
Yeah, that was discussed, that what's currently done in that budget now are services that are provided actually on the county's behalf. And so Colleen does work closely with them. This would be a little bit different in the fact that it would be for services that Food Bank would be providing for us, I guess, for our, on our behalf. So, it is a little different than, than what's currently going on in that program.
So, it wouldn't go through community services, is what you're saying?
Well, I don't know if that had been determined. I think that was, there were some legal issues and things we were talking about. It certainly, and maybe it's not something you wanted to vote on today, but some...
Yeah, no, I was just, I just wanted to keep the board in the circle since we had a meeting on it with two of us last week. And so I just wanna share that those conversations were happening.
Yeah.
It is, and not necessarily that we make it happen, you know, this year, but, but the idea would be that, at least, my thinking is that instead of having to apply, we would take some of that amount out of the pool for applying for, to move it over into community services.
It does seem like, yeah, it would be something that we'd need the whole board to hear a little bit more and discuss. And I think the legal questions, there were some legal and different aspects of it. We were talking about what the contract would look like or if there was, so some of that to iron out yet, but...
So, are we thinking we would take it out of the community services existing proposed budget or...?
No, so I think there's...
I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
No, there's, there's the existing community services budget, and then there's the, then there's like the $100,000 that we allocated.
Yep.
My thought is that since the Food Bank wouldn't be applying for base level services out of that.
So, we would reduce that $100?
That's what we could take.
Okay, that's why I wanted to make sure. Even if we, we do need to do some homework if the board wants us to. If we wanna do that, we might wanna just make it a separate activity, but maybe not necessarily maybe part of the general assistance, just because they're, what they do is a little bit different. But we can, we've got to work that out yet.
So, that's...
Two years, years ago, we just budgeted money to community services. Bob Lincoln brought forth a contract to have those three agencies that we currently do, thus reducing his department employees down to basically one individual. Because the work that we were doing before, they passed on to those three agencies. So, it's, it's, it's been that way probably for the last 16 years, 17 years.
Yeah, it's been working really well. Seems to be. And Colleen's really good to report to us. Seems very happy with the services, so that's great.
Yeah, either they do it or we were doing it, so it didn't make much difference.
Yeah, definitely. So, something maybe for future discussion as soon as we get some of those things ironed out and let the board...
Yeah, no, I'm not proposing any action yet. I just want everybody to be aware.
No, appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Let's see for action today. Has anybody got any suggestions or recommendations? Otherwise, we're looking at capitals. That's just where I think we'd go, but that doesn't mean we've got the positions discussed, the non-bargaining, and that was, non-bargaining and department heads were always included in that. It seemed like we always kind of had that question come up and said, does that include department heads? And, yeah, everybody's in agreement it does.
My brain it did, because they're not bargaining to me.
It was just, so, yeah.
Have we changed anything on the number, Michelle? Probably not, but...
$200,000, a little more than $200,000, so we've trimmed.
Oh, you mean that we've cut, yes.
You mean that we've changed, yeah.
$205.
About $171, $177. About at a...
$200.
$177,000 now, yeah.
Well, that took 200 just then.
At 0%, we were at 199.
Yeah, that was two.
And the library.
Oh.
And the library was another five.
I'm sorry. Yes, I was using 171 instead of the 199. Didn't have that worksheet in front of me. You're right, yeah. We are just over 200.
Yeah. Well, do you have recommendations, Michelle, or do we just go to capital items?
Well, do you...
Or do we, I wanna do, I mean...
I don't, that's totally up to you.
Do that.
We have not talked about the new positions, and maybe we wanna wait till we have the rest of this done before we circle back to that.
Have rest of what done?
The capital and the other.
It's whatever the board's pleasure is. We can look at capital. We can look at staff positions. We can, what else was there?
Michelle, I do know that, you know, in the, in the board budget, it was $55,000 total. I don't think it was coming out of capital. I think it was coming out of the board's budget for strategic planning and that, that rebrand.
Yes.
I'd be comfortable to move that over to capital to help bring that number down even further.
I, if we're talking about using fund balance to fund it, that's fine, more than capital.
Okay.
Is that where it was, out of fund balance? I support...
It was, it was in operations earlier, so.
So, that gets us down to 260.
So, that would be moving the 55, or, I'm sorry, $50,000 plus 15, total of 65.
There you go.
I thought it was 55. I thought it was 40 plus 15.
Oh, it is. I'm sorry. I was right the first time. It's, yes.
15, yeah.
Because I think it's important that we...
Strategic planning? Oh, yeah.
We can do that?
So, when you've got that noted, do we wanna start with some departments? Like capital or...?
We can, yeah, absolutely. Give me a few minutes to hold that up. We can do that, absolutely.
Does that work for you too, Tom, or is there something else? Anybody else wants to pick something else? We can...
I'm gonna grab those off of my desk.
Oh, sure.
We can just, we could just walk away and tell Michelle to find the 2% and call it quits.
Or, yeah.
Well, I might walk away with you.
Nice challenge. Well, we can do that.
Not just Michelle, but direct department heads to find...
No, we've done, we've done it before that way. We wanted to get to a certain point. We said, you figure out in your department, you gotta take X mile out.
Well, we can talk about that and do that if we wish, yeah. You were thinking, what, across the board, just every department?
Yeah. The number's gonna be relatively small. It'll get you down there where you wanna be.
Well, if that's the board's pleasure, we can certainly...
I don't know. Well, we can go through capital as soon as I find the right.
Okay.
Just gotta find it here.
Michelle, is capital, is that gonna be now under the, is that gonna come under tax asking or did we move to capital?
Just to be tricky, some of it has been moved and some of it isn't. And honestly, that was just on the property tax asking worksheet. I moved, I tried not to move equipment because that feels like those are ongoing things we need to rotate every year. So, I tried, at this point, I've tried leaving that in the operating budgets. And, but I did move some of the larger project things to use of fund balance. And we should, we could talk about that a little bit, too. So, our fund balance today in the general fund is about 75% of expenditures for 2022. If we use that for the capital, obviously, that's gonna come down somewhat. We do, so we do still have fund balance that's probably not necessary for what I would call your rainy day fund. I personally would like to see the board use that for one time, things particularly building renovations, because that way we avoid having to go to the voters. You know, I think the voters would appreciate that, too. We're not gonna pay interest on it if we're doing it out of existing funds and those kind of things. And you do have a space study that probably has total improvements of maybe 30 million. I think Rory's here, can probably talk to that. So, there's, I think, we know there are plenty of needs out there. Some of them we're trying to get done using ARPA, but that will not, certainly not address everything in the plan because not everything qualifies. We do have some of the $10 million safe harbor left that can do some of them. And we've got a couple of applications in for review now with our consultants to determine what category they would fit into. But those would be things I think would be important to think about going forward.
Others, one project, I know the board passed a resolution previously supporting the grant application for Waterloo for that water park project, and they're gonna find out in March, and I believe what the request was, was around 50,000. So, I'm assuming that's gonna have to come out of reserves if that is a reality.
That was cat, support that category?
Yeah, they're gonna know in March.
You've already, now, you already planned for, in the example I used again, the Casey Lake restoration. That's already out of reserves?
I have suggested moving it to reserves, yes, so.
Those one time?
Yep.
And so when...
Well, as we go, as we go through capital, would you just point out where it's coming from? If it's gonna be the reserves or tax ask?
I will try to do that. Let me get mine.
And then, so if we're at 75 and you have those items in there right now, though, for the capital...
Like, at least a couple millions.
Yeah, that was reducing, at one time it was about three, but we're a little less than that now?
Probably a little, probably, yeah. Well, yes. These are all approximates. If we talk through things, I'll get you some more specific numbers.
Yeah. Well, after we made some of the decisions today, then to see those on Thursday.
Right, because that will help. Yeah. Okay, so you've seen, I think I'm sharing, yeah, you've seen the screen before. This summarizes it by the departments that have capital requests. And then we'll, I don't know, do you wanna start at the top or how do you wanna go through these?
Start at the top.
Okay.
Work our way down.
So, we'll go to building maintenance. I don't know if we're gonna let Rory talk.
We don't know?
I don't know.
Yep, looks like he's ready.
I just wanna suggest that I moved, I need to pull up another worksheet myself here.
I was gonna say, if you can blow that up a little bit, just 'cause when we look up there, just do the heck of it.
Yes, I can.
Sometimes the sheet's different than...
I forgot to do that. It's probably the same as what you'd had before, except there, so there's a few questions that Rory and I have. We need to visit with Sheriff Thompson. You mentioned last week about, you know, shouldn't the jail fund be paying for a few improvements?
Yes.
Possibly. And I also have another topic I'm gonna put back on the table, hopefully by Thursday, about the 60-40 fund. There's just some things there we need to work through, but I'm not...
Well, the items on here that are jail items, you haven't been discussed yet or finalized yet, are they?
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
Did you ever check if that x-ray machine, I'm pretty sure that came out of 60-40 funds over the years.
It, it did. It has. And just to give you a preview, the 60% of the 60-40 fund, which is where that's been funded from, since we started funding, we fund several things out of there. The per-mar contract, about half, I think, of the deputies that work in the courthouse, and then the security equipment. And we are not generating enough revenue right now to pay for all that. The deputies were just added a few years ago, and that's kind of causing a strain on that fund. So, we are dipping into the 60% fund balance. We did it in '21 and '22, and I'm sure we will be doing it again in '23 and '24. So, we may not, it may not be a good idea, I guess, to do the equipment out of there if that's how we want to fund the services. That's a choice we'll have to make. But I will bring more to you, hopefully, Thursday on that entire fund.
Isn't one of the deputies being budgeted through the county attorney's office?
Yes, and that's, yeah, it's all part of the project that we're trying to work out. And I, we're gonna be changing our internal accounting to make this easier going forward, but right now it's kind of hard to track all that through. So, I am still working on that. Apologize, I couldn't get it done for today. So, I've moved almost all of these projects other than, well, and then you also have with Rory's, you, he did, was kind enough to do some priority twos and threes for you as well. So, that's kind of what we have in building maintenance.
Rory took the initiative to do that?
Did, just with a little conversation, but I liked it. He did. I had asked...
Thanks, Rory. That's the least I could do.
So, from the first list we had, you made some changes, is what you're saying?
I believe this is what was presented the other day.
This one is. But there is a priority three I think you wanted to talk about, Rory.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Look at the screen if you don't have it.
One of those with that $500,000?
That, I do wanna go back and just mention also the patio and sidewalk over at the Pinecrest facility. There was a request to look at adding a shelter onto that. And I'm just wondering if that wouldn't be a project that we could potentially look at ARPA funds for? Because what I'm finding is for a shelter to accommodate roughly 60 people, sometimes maybe even more, I'm looking at a pretty sizable shelter. And I have been working with Mike Hendrickson. Obviously, they have many shelter... Obviously, they have many shelters throughout their parks. And just as an estimate, we're looking at close to 85,000 for a shelter to accommodate that many people. And so we could, we could steer this in the direction of ARPA for possibly a separation. I don't know. I, this is kind of hot off the press. So I just wanted to throw that out there as a potential option to be able to dip into that ARPA money to really get a, a system over there that would be beneficial to us. Because it is quite an increase from what I originally.
What, I mean, I would just leave it using fund balance, because I want to make sure we're use, we're reserving a chunk of this ARPA money to start taking community proposals at some point. And so I don't want us to get too far down in that with things that we could definitely just use fund balance for.
I think it's a good project, Rory. He's really built that up, and we need a place for the veterans if they're outside, for the, not only the regular veterans, but the handicap and everything. So I think it's an excellent project. So whatever way we can fund it, I think it would be beneficial.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the, the one thing I think, and they do it now, because I don't know exactly what kind of shelter, but I'm thinking, you're thinking, oh, covered.
Correct.
No rain and, and that type of thing, because I know then they just go inside currently right now inside, because that large room is, sits right off the, you know, just a few feet.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I like the.
Exactly. And talking with Yolando, they currently have, I believe, 12 picnic tables. He'd like to see that up to about 15. So I'm looking at approximately a 40 by 30 space out back there, which would essentially be what used to be the playground area. That would be a concrete patio. I would like to be able to do both the shelter and the concrete patio at the same time, because obviously if you port the patio, and then you do the shelter, you'd have to come back and put footings in, so you'd have to kind of tear up just a bit what you had already put down. So with that being said, if we were to look at a shelter and a patio, I think that number would be closer to 100,000 to accomplish that.
Plus, it'd have to be handicap accessible, too.
Correct. And that, that would also include a sidewalk routing along the west side of that facility towards the main parking lot on the south side of the building.
And I'd want to make sure we included some of the wheelchair accessible picnic tables as well.
Yeah.
And I believe Yolando is actually looking at at, at replacing some of those picnic tables in, in our discussions earlier. So with that said, my recommendation then would be to look at that patio, shelter, sidewalk, and upping that to 100,000.
So you're wanting to increase to 100,000 and suggest we do an ARPA evaluation, right?
Why not first, at least find out, I guess, but yeah, that's good. It shouldn't take long to even get that together to find out, really, right?
Yeah, that should be a fairly simple process.
So, I mean, is there? Step on that would be to get a questionnaire submitted on this.
If not.
I'm just trying to understand the argument against just, against using fund balance for it. So that we can, because I, I think we do seriously need to use some of these ARPA dollars for community based projects. That's like the spirit of, of the legislation. There's a lot of, so this is, we've got healthy fund balance, that we talk about all the time. This, this seems like a good use of that.
We do, and I, yeah, I can appreciate those comments, too. I thought, I was just trying to take Michelle's warning a little bit to us, since we don't know what's down the pipe next year, we might be doing the same thing with our fund balance, I'm assuming. I could possibly do it another year, but, because we need to reduce it, you know?
Yeah.
And don't know what lies ahead, that was all.
I see it as a good community project. Anytime it deals with the veterans and the handicap and getting them outside and everything, I think it's an excellent community project.
Yeah.
Not only a VA, but community. I think it's a prime target for ARPA dollars.
I say run it through ARPA, and if it doesn't pass this test, then we, we fund it. Fund it.
Yeah.
Out of reserves.
Okay, the other item, the last go-around, the question was brought up about maintenance costs if we were to purchase a new x-ray machine. And so I lit, I did look into that, and fortunately, across the board, that 4,000, roughly $4,000 a year is a a, a pretty common dollar figure for yearly maintenance on those systems. Tom, I believe you had asked that question.
Okay, the 42,000 plus 4,000 a year maintenance, after all that?
Well, no, it, I've included, actually, in that 42,000, I've actually included three years' worth of maintenance in that. So that, that extra maintenance cost would come to us after three years. Yeah, I just wanted to just let the board know that moving, moving forward after we get through this initial three-year agreement, that would go back to, and who knows, by, by that time, it could go up to 5,000. But in that neighborhood, they're all about the same. Landscaping for the courthouse was another question that was brought up. We are going to be sending out some potential dates to get the space committee together to talk about that. I don't have a dollar amount, unfortunately. I just, we need to get some ideas going. We need to really get a, a vision of what we would like to see out there, and it's difficult to, to put a dollar amount to that. So I guess I would be looking for some guidance on, do we, do we hold off, get the space committee together and really figure out what it is that we want? I mean, I've threw out some different ideas with shade in the plaza area, but I think we're looking at a little larger scale landscaping project than just that.
Were you supportive of the shade kind of areas or not?
Yeah, no, I, I definitely supported the shade areas, and we had talked about shade trees over the years in the, in the parking lots as well. You know, we, we have a big parking lot that butts right up against residential neighborhood, residential neighborhood that I used to live in. And we're aesthetically not being good neighbors on that side. Quite frankly, it's pretty dingy looking, and we've got property taxpayers right across the street from us. So there definitely needs to be improvement there. And plus, you can Google for yourself just the, the financial benefits of trees planted in cities. You know, reduces the heat and wear and tear on parking lots and everything, and so a lot of benefits. But I think as we talk about, but but definitely we need to have a meeting of the space committee soon to discuss, because I know it's hard to put in a dollar amount, but, because there's, but there's a lot of good potential that, that we could utilize the space a lot better.
One thing we are hoping to accomplish yet this year is we would like to hopefully work with Waterloo Leisure Services to get our trees trimmed in the front. Right now, they're starting to approach in the scales of justice. It's hard to see the, the Lockhart County name on the building, and so we want to clean that up out front just a bit. But that is something that's outside of, of this budget that would be accomplished through our operating budget. Those were the three, three items that, from our last meeting. So going back up to priority one projects, the rationale behind the ranking these as a priority one project is we looked at, does it pose a safety risk? Is it hit the end of its useful life? And those, those primarily are, are the keys when you look at these priority ones. For an example, the fire alarm panel. That system was put in back in 2001, and we are finding it very difficult to get parts for it, let alone getting vendors to, to work on it. And we are sitting with a hard trouble on the unit now. So that is, in my opinion, the highest priority item. Again, the, the x-ray machine walkthrough metal detectors, Michelle and I had spoke. If it had to come down to it, our x-ray machine is currently working. We have not had to call out for service on that, but that would be one item. If it came down to it, we could potentially move that to next year. Although I really wouldn't want to, because I feel like we are running on borrowed time with that unit, given the age. That was purchased back in 2000 and 2012, so.
What's the timeframe if you ordered one today?
Lead time, that is a good question, Tom. I would have to look into that. I'm not exactly sure.
And our current, our current contract, how long did, how long that one for? Is it renewable, June, July 1st?
We're actually out of contract, because we knew we were going to put this request in. We chose not to even go into a contract. So we're, basically, if we have an issue, it would be time immaterial. The one item that I would highly recommend us doing would be the walkthrough metal detector. That unit, we have had, we've seen this uptick in, in issues with that particular unit. The sheriff's department has purchased two mobile metal detectors that they'll use outside of a courtroom, for an example, and those have really proven to be very reliable. And so where I've got my dollar amounts for those would be two of those units. Plus, it would allow us to widen that gap as folks come through, that line down there, that it would be more ADA accessible.
How did they get through now? Wheelchair or go through there now?
It's, they can, but it's very, very tight. In fact, some people, we actually bring around that metal detector, and then we have to wand them, which that can put somebody in a bit of an awkward situation.
Well, we're moving tables in order to do that.
Slide the tables back, yes.
And have these mobile metal detectors, when they've been set up at the courtrooms, have they caught things that were not caught at the door?
I don't believe so. I've just seen them being tested over at the jail, but that's, that's a good question. I don't, I can't answer that. I would like to say no. But I, I don't know for sure. So any ques, any more questions on the x-ray machine walkthrough metal detector?
That's what I was gonna suggest. Do we want to go through this item by item, or is the board like the, entertain the idea of going back to our department heads and allowing them to look at budgets and then bringing those forward, and whether we agree or disagree with their cuts, or?
Yes, I like that option, because I don't think it's necessary for us to go through the capital projects item by item.
Yeah, with the prioritization that we did, obviously, you know, I think that's, that's a task that can be easily accomplished, looking at the priority twos and threes and, and what can be postponed.
Well, and you can make.
You used to have the departments rank them, remember, Linda?
Yeah, I know. Well, that's what kind of Rory's done here, too, but I just meant to, if he, if we're looking for actual cuts for the budget, then maybe we propose they come back to us with those, and whether we agree or disagree on what they've cut, or we'd like to see something else cut instead.
I can live with that.
Do that on Thursday.
Would you want to, would you want to glance at the other departments? Rory certainly owns the bulk of the CIP, but I see we, we have Mike here.
And you're gonna determine what the jail costs are in there, whether they're removed?
Right.
How those are being paid for, so that's all.
Yeah. I didn't know if you want to look at conservation quickly, we can.
I'm not sure that, that I agree with having you send this back to department heads to identify cuts for us, because the direction that we gave boards at the start, or all the departments at the start of the budget was to present us the budgets that you think you need to, to run your departments and deliver the services that you need. And then it's up to us to find cuts that need to be made. So I think if they're, if we're looking to cut, I think that's up to us to do that homework.
Well, for me, it is to agree to the cut, obviously, but I would like the experts, I think, in their areas or their departments to kind of give that thought more so than mine, but I could, we could do either. If there's something anybody wants to look at, I thought, too, in fairness to all the departments, it might be across the board type of things work better, but.
I'd probably like it that way better, too, to be honest with you.
Go ahead, Mike. I know, see, yeah, if they don't, they can certainly speak to that.
Mike Hendrickson, County Conservation Director. Just one quick comment. I talked with Michelle, and as we were, and last week, when we were looking at the fund balance, and of course Casey Lake was in there, which is obviously a, a one-shot deal. But I did let Michelle know that there are a couple of other items on our capital, as in the garbage unit for the hook truck and the, the end loader for the south unit. Those are, those are 20 to 25-year investments also. So just, I'm only throwing this out there. It's something that might be something you'd consider for the fund balance. It's not going to be an annual reoccurring cost. Now, we wouldn't want to say that with everything in here, because we will always have some type of a, for lack of better terms, larger ticket item that we would bring here. Like, we, we use a lot of tool cats in our, that are very versatile little units. But they run, geez, they run 60 grand. And I think on our five-year plan, we've got one of those in the budget for next year. So there will always be something like that. We have a couple of things in here, just something you could consider. So I'm just only throwing that out.
Yeah, I see a couple items on there myself. Kathy, did you prioritize your capital projects? I assume you did.
I didn't put a, a number value to them, but I would, of course, we would prioritize our large pieces of iron, our larger equipment as being the most important. I think it's really important that we keep those up to date, and by date, keep them up to date, that means probably our dump trucks being like a 10 to 12-year life. Our mortar graders, we can buy with eight-year warranties, and that's fantastic. That saved us some money. But the dump trucks, the manufacturers, the vendors, they don't want to give us warranties like that. They'll give us a two-year warranty. And then we are left with, you know, taking care of these for the next 10 years. And these trucks were never meant to run on gravel roads. That's one of the biggest reoccurring issues with the, our dump trucks is the emission systems, the electrical systems, they're very sensitive. They're always going to cost us a lot of money to operate these dump trucks.
And the thing with your department is these come out of the secondary roads fund anyway.
Right, yeah, right.
So, quite frankly, I'm, as long as there's money there coming in, my attitude is you get what, you know? I don't, I don't say I don't care, but it's a different ballgame.
It's, yeah, different for source.
I think as more you spend there, the less you have for roads and bridges.
Right, so would you, do you want me to take off 10% or 5% or whatever? What is your?
I mean, you've been doing budgets for 16 years now.
We do make a transfer of property taxes into secondary roads, though, so we could consider making a change to that. But I also, we might want to talk again about local option, too. And I, which reminds me, I did, I think I forwarded to all of you, I did ask Mike to look into the local option language and make sure we, it would be appropriate that we could set up a separate fund and provide those funds directly for road construction, which he has concurred with.
So we could do that with some of this, and/or?
Well, I'm. It all kind of blends together. I need to, if we would reduce the transfer of property taxes to secondary roads, it would depend how much we would reduce it if we could still afford to do all the equipment. So we'll, yeah, I would not want to fund equipment out of local option necessarily. Unless it's specifically used only for construction of roads, then we might be able to, but I, I would still prefer not to do that.
It's, it's can, secondary roads is a different, yeah.
It is just, it is a different funding stream.
Very different funding stream, but yeah, I was gonna say, too, when you talk about let more money available for roads and bridges, it's like without the equipment, we don't have.
Need to maintain.
Anything that we can work with.
Right.
I guess what I'm, I feel like I'm looking for overall with capital is, I know, I know you said it's, it's hard to look at what that kind of magic number would be on an average of ongoing capital expenses. Because sure, like the, the once in a 25-year type of thing, that absolutely makes sense to use fund balance. But what I'm keeping in my back of my mind is some of this draconian legislation that's out there. One of them, I understand the language, would basically take not what the property tax rate was, but what the overall tax collection was.
Right.
Set that as a number, and then you can't go X percent above that without, so it's, it's really wild stuff that they're throwing at, so it's, So it's, it's really wild stuff that they're throwing at us, so it's, I'd, I'd like to use fund balance for capital, but I don't want to see us, um, if we, you know, artificially, so to speak, lower the tax rate this year, and then we're nailed in that going forward, because that's, there's all these proposals, and they have the power, they have the majority, they have the votes to do all this stuff, and so that's, that's what I'm trying to be cautious of as, as we think about, um, how much, um, comes out, comes out of, because there's always going to be capital every year, and I, frankly, even when you're looking at projects that, uh, capital equipment that only happens every twenty-five years, if you spread that across the whole county, there's something that happens every twenty-five years coming up every year or two. And so I just want to make sure we've, we're getting something in there that's sustainable and puts us in a good position, um, uh, going forward. It'd be, it'd be great if we could say that the, the state was a, was a good partner, um, but as I described them in his legislative form, they're not. They're the drunk racist uncle at your, um, family gatherings that you don't have much say over what they're going to say or do, or what inappropriate thing they're going to whip out. Um, and so that's, that's, uh, so, I mean, that, that's, you know, part of the, 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 the fear right now, because I, I want to use this capital or this, this fund balance. I want to invest this in the, in the community, um, but it, it's just we're, we're operating under those, those circumstances right now.
Yeah, and I think that's really what your lead in kind of with where we are. We may need to be planning for next year or future years or whatever a little bit, too, not to just go ahead and take advantage of what we have, got us a healthy reserve, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with what Chris said, but the only concern I have like this year, you want to avoid those, uh, ups and downs with your tax askings every year, but this year, when you have such a huge reserve at about seventy-three percent, and you're, you're, um, authorizing pay raises and so forth, there should be no tax increase. And I think we got to look at, next year, we're still going to have that healthy balance up there. I guarantee you, that thing's going to be lingering right about where it's at. So we want to try to avoid that up and down every year. It just, consciously, I just can't have a tax increase when we're sitting at healthy and we're granting pay raises and buying this and buying that, so I think this is a year that we can afford to get down, uh, and bring that number closer to zero and fund everything, and then move on, and if we have to take some out of the reserves, that's fine.
Well, I think that was part of the caution from Michelle, as though they could come back with a cap or something on the rate we have, and then you'd have nothing to grow from next year. You'd just be zero or whatever we take it to, and then it'd be like, okay, now you can only raise it two percent. And those are just, that's just an example, Tom, but those types of things that we do want to be cautious with, too, you're right. But I know we dropped last year, we lowered taxes, which, you know, we've kind of been trying to maintain that six point three seven, whatever, that range, and we, because of ARPA, and thinking there were several projects that we could utilize that for, I think we pulled those off of what our capital improvement plan would have been, so now we are at a lower number than we were for quite some time, so, yeah, just be cautious.
I don't know if you'll ever find another entity, government entity, that carries that large of a reserve.
Well, at one time, we looked at all the, we looked at some and had those examples. I think it'd be good to do that again, because we do want to see where we're at, but I thought, yeah, it's, like Chris said, though, we're kind of in difficult times right now for planning, and it's hard to know how much is enough and how much we need to save, you know, kind of like with your savings accounts.
And, and, because I definitely, definitely want to use, utilize reserves.
Yeah.
But it's, and it's not so much a question of will we still have strong reserves next year or the year after, but if some of this legislation passes, I'm looking at what are the boards going to be facing in five and ten years of being locked in at this lower rate, because there's only so much that we, that future boards will be able to dip into reserves to, um, keep just basic services going, potentially under some of these proposals. And so that's, that's, that's my only thinking. Like, I want to invest these reserves in the, in the, in the community, absolutely. But, and I'd say that, you know, we, we're in a good position, um, because, um, you know, I, I've been on the board for six years, so I could say I'm a part of it now, but because , uh, years of previous, you know, boards setting us up, and so I, I want to continue that, that tradition of, of setting up, you know, future boards for, to be in a good, um, position for the county.
And we know at some point, like I said, that loss revenue fund, I don't know when that goes up on general, like I say, into our general fund or general reserves, is that, and then we're kind of growing, look like we're growing it again, but it's because of the ARPA dollars, so I don't know if there's a timeline for that, because I don't want it to look to the public like we're putting in.
Right.
All these millions of dollars again because of our reserves, but we still have that to plan.
That will be building, that's why it's important that we be able to make some good decisions about facilities and a couple of the ARPA applications that we have in process, they, we need to get answers back from those and figure out, you know, where those puzzle pieces fit to tell us what we have left.
Yeah.
Michelle, the loss revenue on ARPA, I asked the other day, is that, got a time period on that, too?
I, I, so it would, it would have to be obligated. I think same as the others, have to be obligated by December of twenty twenty-four, but we are certainly doing that with, because we're using it, you basically use it for wages, and we're only using public safety wages. Um, so we can definitely, we will definitely get there, and then after that, you can use it for buildings or whatever. There would not be a time constraint on how we would choose to use it after that, as long as we had enough fund balance to fund those salaries, which we do. I mean, we know we're budgeting for those. Does that make sense? It's confusing.
Yeah, we'll need an ARPA discussion later and.
We do, we have a lot of ARPA decisions to make.
We've got to go into work sessions of that, yeah.
Yep.
Looking at capital list.
Yeah, do you want?
I don't know, the office remodel's really kind of off the table for the treasurer anyway, right? That's an ARPA project, and she had it listed, but I was going to say.
I don't know that, that's one of the applications we're waiting to hear back on, I believe.
It's currently being evaluated. The last I checked, there's been some communication going on directly between the treasurer's office and Baker Tilly on that application. That's going to take some time, and it may, it may be a surprising figure when it comes out, when I look at some of the other ones we've had go through.
Five hundred thousand, I doubt will cover it, yeah. Okay, so you, that, so that stays in then, or that we, is that in tax askings?
Well, I think I, I think I've probably already moved it.
I thought, oh, that's all.
Fund balance column, so it's already out of your tax levy.
All right.
Um, and hopefully, it won't hit the fund balance either, because hopefully it will qualify for ARPA, but that's why it would be nice if, it'll be good when we can get those justification back. Because of the size of that project, they've got to evaluate other alternatives, and that just takes some time, I think.
Yeah, it does, and.
Kind of a mixed feelings on the board as far as how we want to go forward. Do we want to wait until Thursday until we see where those dollars are and where the changes are and where we're at, and then dig into a few more items, or at least at that time of Sunday?
Yeah, my head hurts.
That makes sense. We've, you've got accomplished a lot today, so.
Does that work for you, too, Tom?
Yeah, that's, that's fine, whatever the board wants.
Well, I just meant, or do you have another idea? That's fine, too, so, okay.
Hopefully, maybe the departments can look at their budget and go back and say, you know, something I can weight on this item and help us out a little.
Yeah, that, yeah, that'd be good. Then you'll get the Gerald Sheriff's questions answered, and hopefully by Thursday, or maybe we just address them ourselves.
I will say, you know, looking at, Rory still here?
He walked out.
I appreciate the, the building maintenance, the way they've ranked, that there's sort of the gotta haves, the like to haves, and the one, you know?
Yep.
Um, that, that helps just sort of contextualize everything, so maybe that's a, an ask of our department heads.
Well, so conservation has ranked theirs, one through eleven.
Yeah.
I get the ranking, but I, but I'm not sure where the break is at from, we gotta have this one, or we'd really like to have this one, or this would be nice, so just in that.
I'm assuming.
I get the ranking, one through eleven, but where's that break at? This is, this is the money one.
All gotta have or not?
Yep.
Okay, we'll, we'll try to.
I hated that as an apartment. I know, I know.
Well, and that depends on where, where we're at and the gap, too, or if we want to do something different, we might want to do something different, but yeah, we got the time to think about it, I guess, by Thursday.
Because I know, um, I know things like the Bison Holder, that to me is a gotta have thing, you know?
So what was? I'm sorry, oh, the Bison, yeah.
I think it's something we got away with, but is, um.
You never know when that might stop.
Yeah, yeah.
I would agree.
And you'll need to make those arguments, too, as we get there, it's like either for it or something changes, yeah.
And it plays right in my plan to open a rodeo out there, so.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, no, no, we're not.
We are definitely thinking outside the box now.
And if there's any others, yeah, that you think we should, yeah, okay.
They call me the sequin cowboy.
Too much information.
Okay, is there any other direction you want to give then to department heads for Thursday, or?
Is everything clear, or?
No, is it clear for you? Oh, no, I'm pretty, feeling pretty murky right now.
What do you need cleared up?
Are, what exactly are you asking department staff?
Nothing, that, not anything at this point.
Okay, that's why I want to clarify, because I don't want to come into.
To review their items and see if there's anything that needs changed.
And you're talking about operating and capital?
Well, I guess I'll, yeah, if that, if they think there's something in operating as well, that, yeah, because you did put some items in operating that were typically other places last year, previous years.
The equipment, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, so I guess I'll, I hope, but doesn't mean that we ask anybody to cut, doesn't look like, sound like, just consider.
Okay.
Before we do it, right?
And it, and honestly, any tiering of those priorities would help. I understand.
We'll work on that.
Well, that's what they'll probably, yeah, that's what they'll bring Thursday, if there is any teetering, yeah, okay.
I think, I think I understand my homework, so.
Send an email, well, yeah, your homework, yeah, get those numbers finalized, yeah, that's your homework. I know you've had a hard time, and you've worked hard to try to get some answers on some of those, so it doesn't work, so.
It's a learning process. That part will be so much smoother next year.
Yep, it will, yeah. So, moving on then to any reports or information from the board? No, no?
Offer a motion to adjourn?
Move, we're second.
Moving second, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose my meeting.